Good evening and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Common Council of the City of Hartford. All proper notices were sent. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask if you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, Lori.
The mayor and all alderpersons are present?
Super. We have before us a unanimous consent agenda.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by President Hagie, seconded by Alderperson Turchi.
Motion by Alderperson Hagie, seconded by Alderperson Turchi approving the following three items on the unanimous consent agenda. The Common Council minutes of March 14th, 2023. Number two, authorizing appropriate city officials to accept the quote from Fisher Brothers LLC for the installation of the water play features by Maker for $15,000. And number three, discussion and consideration of approval to contract with Lifetime Door Company LLC to replace a total of 12 overhead garage doors at the fire station and the EMS building for a price of $97,500.
Okay. Any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Communications, Lori.
I have two things or three, yeah, two things today. Discussion and consideration of approving a transient merchant license for Weedman.
Okay. Just please come up, state your name, your address, the company.
Hello, everyone. My name is Anthony Evans. I'm the marketing manager for Weedman Lawn Care in our Hartford, Wisconsin location. The address is 1028A Western Drive, Hartford, Wisconsin 53027. So what we're looking to do is just go door to door, offering everyone free quotes for our lawn care service. We use Google Maps so that we don't have to go to the house and actually measure the yard. We just do it online. All that we ask is for a first and last name, phone number. We give them a call the next day with that free quote depending on square footage of yardage. And that's about it.
Thank you. Lori, is that all you need?
That's all I need.
Okay.
There will actually be six gentlemen that will be going door to door.
Okay. Six gentlemen going door to door, super.
That's it.
And you're based right out of Hartford?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
They will be ready tomorrow afternoon if you want to step in and pick them up.
Awesome.
Okay.
That'll work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The second item is discussion and consideration of moving the April 25th Common Council meeting to April 18th. As you know, we always have to meet the third Tuesday in April for the organizational meeting, so this is looking to cancel or to move the second meeting from the fourth Tuesday to the third Tuesday.
Right. And this is via state statute that we have to have the meeting on the third Tuesday. So a proponentary vote, but we'll look for a motion in a second. Alderperson Phillips, seconded by Alderperson Sikora.
Motion by Alderperson Phillips, seconded by Alderperson Sikora to move the April 25th Common Council meeting to April 18th.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Thank you. This time we go to appearances and citizen comments. Anybody wishing to appear, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address. And you get three glorious minutes. Please understand any other item on the agenda when there is one on the last one as regards to next generation housing that is not an open hearing. So if you have anything to say, this is the time to say it. Going once, aha.
I'm Tom Hosted, Executive Director at the Hartford Area Development Corporation. And in addition to the letter that we wrote in support of the Next Generation Housing Project here in Hartford, we asked members of the community to come out. We have some of our board members here this evening from the HADC. We also have the new Executive Director at the Chamber of Commerce, and we also have some representatives from the bid district here as well. All of these folks wanted to be here tonight to reinforce their support for attainable housing in Hartford through this Next Generation Housing Project. So I thank them for coming out and for their support, and we want to urge you, if you would please, to vote yes on the engineering bid or proposal that you're going to be reviewing this evening. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other appearances?
Justin says there's no microphone. I'm not a fan of. Good evening, everybody. My name is Nate Marshall. I have two roles here. One, I am President of the HADC, serving with Tom. As well, I am one of two partners of Helgason Industries based here in Hartford. We've been an organization based in this community since 1977. We've survived many economic cycles, including this current one we're in. Whether we think we're up or down, anybody's guess. We currently employ about 270 employees in the state of Wisconsin. We have about 80 employees in the state of Arizona. We have about 60 employees in the country of Poland, two people in China, one in Brazil. So we're a global organization, but we're based right here in this community. Housing is really critical for our business. Today, I had the chance to entertain a customer headquartered in Illinois. They make large yellow equipment. They've been a fixture of our community, both for our business and for many others in this region. The reason for their visit today is telling to this meeting. They were here to relocate work from Wisconsin to Mexico. Okay? We're going to lose work. Why are we losing the work? It is not because we are too expensive. It's because we told them we can no longer do it because we don't have capacity. We don't have capacity because we don't have a large enough workforce. It's a workforce we can't seem to grow at the rate they need. That problem we have is a problem that will continue if we outpace the growth of Hartford. That's why we're in favor of this development. We want to grow here. We need this to grow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to appear for citizen's comments, please state your name, your address, company if necessary, or applicable, I should say.
Good evening. I'm Tom Dottle. I'm the Vice President of Finance at Signacast here in Hartford. So like Nate talked about, we've had some of the similar issues with customer issues and employees. We have roughly 700 and 750 people here based in Hartford, but like Nate, also have employees all over the United States and even in Europe. So we've had some of the similar things in that some of our customers' orders, we have not been able to fulfill because we don't have people. And again, it's attracting and retaining people to this wonderful community we have. They don't have places to live. So again, Signacast is in favor of this and to develop some housing for our employees to be part of the community and be part of this wonderful area that we live and work in. So again, that's my spot.
Thank you very much. I'm going to make a last call. Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll go directly then to aldermanic requests. Any person on the staff here, or I should say, an elected deus here. We'd start with President Hagie.
All right. I'm going off a little bit different direction right now. Last Wednesday evening was, I would say, probably my last meeting with the Mid-Moraine Association where we met over at Sockville. One item of business that the Legislative Committee had brought was to promote a yes vote on the sharing of 20% of the county sales tax. And I'd just like to reiterate, when you go to vote, vote yes on that referendum question because that would help us with providing funding for roadwork. And also last night was my last night at a CDA board meeting, and we did a tour of Hart Haven and Washington Heights, and the buildings are aging. And as with every facility, funding is an issue. There have been some things that happened. We've gotten grants, but there are needs, and it's going to continue being an issue to find the money to keep the facilities in good shape. And I would say they are in good shape, other than some things that have happened. But you have to plan for the future, and I think that is being done. So hats off to the department heads, et cetera, and keep on moving. So those are my comments.
Thank you very much. Alderperson Carroll?
Nothing at me here.
Alderperson Resnick?
Well, tonight is Kyle Sikora's last meeting.
Wrong.
Is it?
Wrong. You've got one more to go?
Then never mind. Then never. I thought you had, I thought tonight was it, so, all right, never mind. I was going to say some nice things about you. You might forget by next week.
Alderperson Garza?
Nothing to nightmare.
Alderperson Turchi?
Nothing to nightmare.
The almost late Alderperson Sikora?
I'm going to announce my retirement.
Yeah.
Uh huh.
Alderperson Koller?
Nothing to nightmare.
Alderperson Webb?
Yeah, just one thing, maybe two things. First is, I think it's great that we have individuals here to publicly comment. I think it's really important for us to hear what the community wants us to do on issues that are before us, and I would encourage anybody to come and express their opinions. I think it's just really important, and that's what we're here for. We're supposed to represent the people that have elected us. And the second thing is, no matter what the outcome is on like the Next Generation Housing thing, I just want to thank Steve, everybody in the city for like working on this, putting it together. It's obviously like a big project, and I know a lot of work went into it, so I just want to say that.
Thank you very much. And I just did want to mention too, Lori, this, just correct me if I'm wrong, voting is open the rest of this week, so Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of this week here at City Hall, right up on the top offices there, from 7:45 a.m. to 4:15 p.m.
Correct.
So if you would like to vote early, you are welcome to vote early. Please bring a driver's license, and after that, you cannot vote on Saturday, Sunday, or the Monday before the actual election day. So you cannot come in and vote early those days. So your last chance to vote early, if that's what you'd like to do, is this Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And then, of course, Tuesday, the Tuesday, the 4th, will be election day, and you would not come to the top desk. Then you go to your normal polling place in districts 1, 2, and 3. So with that, we can go right to...
We didn't finish Mr.?
You got to give him a...
Oh, Mr. Phillips. Not the first time he ignored me. So nothing to nightmare.
It's not your last day, is that a?
Okay. Thank you very much. With that, we go all the way to the City Administrator's Report, which is discussion and consideration of authorizing city officials to execute contract documents for Next Generation Housing Pilot Project Engineering Services, contract with R.A. Smith and an estimated bid amount of $328,372. And with that, I believe, is going to be taking the lead on that, our city planner, Justin Drew.
So tonight, I'm going to start by going a little bit over what is proposed with the engineering services, the actual thing that you're voting on. City engineer put out a request for proposals to qualified engineering firms to put together a bid proposal for doing the engineering work associated with Next Generation Housing Project. We received six bids. We followed our bid process to the letter. We met with them and answered questions. All six were well-qualified. We moved three of them on to interviews, and from those interviews, we felt like R.A. Smith was the best positioned to do the best job in the timeframe that we were looking for. They were the second least expensive proposal. We are very pleased to announce John, the city engineer, had, based on what he'd been seeing, he was anticipating this would come in at over $1 million, and the bid that we were recommending is $328,000. So quite a bit less than we were expecting. R.A. Smith is a large, multifaceted engineering firm. They've got a lot of experience doing these kind of projects. We have a lot of faith in the, what they could do for us, and they actually did the concept plan as well. So they're already kind of up and running and familiar with where we're at. This would not impact the budget at all because this would actually come from the funds that the county has pledged for this pilot project, so it would have no impact on the budget. So that is it for the actual engineering services. I've been inundating you with a lot of things that you requested over the last couple of weeks.
Good work.
So the Tracy Cross Market Housing Study, the concept plan maps, links to the Next Generation Housing Framework that the county did, the RFP itself, as well as R.A. Smith's response. I did an eight-page question and answer to, based on the answers that, or the questions that Steve got from each of you. We have a couple additional things tonight to try and explain, some last-minute things. I will hand those out quick, or do we want to have? Let me just take one for myself, and then there should be some extras as well. I'm not going to go through all of the question and answers or anything like that. I assume that you've all looked through that. Certainly, if you have questions about some of those, some of the stuff that I've given you, can answer that tonight. I just want to go through briefly kind of the high-level, why are we doing this? One of the big questions is why would the city get involved in residential development? Historically, it is primarily a private endeavor. We do have a history of getting involved on some level. We paid for a number of subdivisions' infrastructure back in the 90s. With the Ring Cone 225, we invested over $2 million in that and created a tax incremental district to make that work. Also applied for numerous grants with WEDC. So we do have a history of that. Beyond that, the Tracy Cross Market Housing Study showed a large demand for houses under $350,000, and they are simply not being built by the private sector. The county executive provided a letter to you with comments from developers about why they are not meeting this market need, and it basically comes down to they can make more money building bigger homes, so they're not interested in doing this. There's three pilot projects. Jackson, which owns their own property and is serving as developer. This one where we're proposing to serve as developer. And Slinger, where they had a private developer. After discussing it with the village administrator, Steve did today. Slinger really wanted to be a part of the Next Generation Housing Project in hopes they still can be, but the site that had been picked as the pilot project, the developer just didn't want to do it because they wanted to sell houses for more than that, and they didn't want to do workforce or attainable-style housing. There are almost no existing homes in the city under $350,000. Again, that's kind of 200 to 350,000 is where there's the most demand. And finally, our inventory of vacant lots is at its lowest level in 20 years. We've got under 100 single-family lots that you could come in and pull a building permit for. What is the risk to the city? The total development costs, we now estimate at about $10 million, 10.15, less than we originally had. The city would borrow 7.85 million with county assistance funding the rest. We have not spent any money on this project to this point. As I mentioned, the engineering services contract would be paid for by the county. The Tracy Cross Study predicted that 480 units would be built and then bought and rented within two and a half years. That's a lot more units. We couldn't figure out how to fit that many units on here. So we came up with a concept plan that was 344 units. One of the big questions is why this mix? We've got a lot of different housing styles, and that's no accident. That came directly from a recommendation from the Tracy Cross Study. They felt like it diversified the project well, allowed for the quickest uptake of the units and absorption of the project, and that's what they're seeing elsewhere in Indiana and the Chicago area. They're seeing these kind of mixed uses, and that's what's doing the best. So, and then finally, I did some projections on how I thought the TID would work based on how I thought we could pay the debt and the increment that would be created, but I wanted to have our bond advisor take a look at it as well. And so I sent that to you as well, two different scenarios, one for with county participation and one without. With county participation, Huntington believes that the debt would be fully repaid in 14 years, and the TID can run for at least six years longer than that, and that they're using a more conservative five-year absorption rate for all that housing. So finally, what are the benefits to the city? First, get needed housing options to people who work in the city. There are over 4,000 people who work in the city that don't live here. We don't expect that all of them will choose to live here, but if there were more options, we think more of them would. Assist local businesses with worker attraction and retention issues. The representatives from both Signacast and Helgason discussed that already. It would also create churn of existing housing stock. We think some people will move from their home to one of these, freeing up some of the older neighborhood homes and thus homes that would be potentially more affordable. We project over $5 million in extra TID revenue for the life, 20-year life of the district, which could fund other public-purpose projects outside of the TID area within half a mile. We always have needs for those kind of things, and finding funding sources is increasingly difficult. So it's also a long-term tax-based growth. By the end of the term of this district, the projections are that the property in the Next Generation Housing would be worth well over $100 million. Even during the life of the TID, the project counts towards our net new construction. Our levy limits serve as kind of a ratcheting feature that makes budgeting at government increasingly difficult, and this serves as a little bit of an outlet for that. Finally, additional customer base for local businesses and makes it easier to attract new commercial businesses. Everybody always says they want this restaurant or that store to come to town. They don't come without people. So those are the main things. Steve put something together, and also Deb Sillsky is here again from the county to try and further explain a little bit. I know a number of you were having some issues understanding exactly how these funds flow. It is pretty complicated, the mechanism we've come up with. So I'm going to ask Deb to come up for a couple minutes to the podium and talk through one of the handouts, the bigger handout that I gave you, and then Steve has one other thing, and then that's it.
Good evening.
Probably pull that down just a little.
A little more?
There you go. Perfect.
Good? All right. So I put this together, trying to simplify the...
Just for the audience, if you could state your name and, you know, your position with the county. I don't know if you did that just...
Yes. I'm Deb Sillsky and the Community Development Director for Washington County.
Thank you.
All right. So I had handed out the framework for Next Gen Housing at the last meeting, and in the back, there were two pretty complicated flowcharts. So what I provided you today is a simplification of those flowcharts that really just talk about the flow of funds from the county to the homeowner. So I'm just going to take a minute to go through that, starting from left and going right. So the county would provide 0% through 2.32 million to the city, and that is a grant to the city to do with engineering and infrastructure. Once the city sells the single-family lots to the builders, the county would record $14,500 lien. So we're taking that 2.32 million and dividing it by the number of owner-occupied lots, which is 160, to get to that $14,500, which is the county contribution for Next Gen Housing on the project. So this would be a lien on the property. The builder then would construct the home lot packages for 75% under 300,000, 100% under 400,000. And when the builder sells the home lot packages to the buyer, the actual sales price is going to be that 300, 400,000 plus the 14,500 for a sale price of either 314.5 or 414.5. At the time of the home sale, the city would have an opportunity to put a five-year deed restriction on the property. So what this does is it prevents flipping the property for profit because there would be a depressed home value. There's a difference between what the home will sell for and the fair market value. So that difference would be within a deed restriction, and the homeowner would earn that value difference over the course of five years. If they sell the home prior to that five years, then a portion of that deed restriction would be paid to the city in response to that value difference. While the home, while the home buyer is paying that extra 14,500, they would be eligible for a $20,000 down payment program, which is also part of Next Generation Housing, essentially paying that portion of the 14,000 plus a little more. So that'll actually be a second mortgage for them, and that is going to be earned over time. So they would receive $20,000 at close, like you would as a second mortgage, and then they have five years then to earn that forgiveness of that loan, either through volunteering. Every one hour volunteer, they get $25, or any dollar that they contribute would be 70 cents on the dollar over the course of five years. If someone chooses not to participate in volunteering or financial giving, then when they sell the house, then that full 20,000 then would be paid back. But we anticipate that there will be a lot of participation within that down payment program. So then after close, that lien will be satisfied, and those funds go back to the county, that 14,500 satisfying the lien. And if the, the home is sold within that five years, that deed restriction then triggers the claw back to the city. So what happens to these funds when they come back to the county? That, that $14,500 per, per home lot, those funds come back to the county, and then a percentage of that goes to fund additional Next Gen Housing development infrastructure in other places throughout the county. We anticipate that we would have Next Gen Housing developments, or we would hope, Next Gen Housing developments in all of our municipalities throughout Washington County. So those funds, a portion of those funds that come back will help fund additional infrastructure projects, and then another portion will fund the down payment program. But in the end, once we've reached our 1,000-home goal over the course of the next eight to nine years, all of those funds would be revolved into that down payment. On the bottom of the sheet, just three main bullets. So the county is providing the 2.32 million 0% loan to the city. That's getting paid back via a lien by the home buyer. The home buyer is getting a down payment loan of $20,000, and that could be fully forgiven within five years or paid at the time of, at the time of resale. And then if all the owner-occupied dwelling units, all 160 homes in this pilot utilize the down payment program, that county would also be investing a total of about $3.2 million to reduce the mortgages of those home buyers. So there's a lot of more detail within each one of these steps that's outlined in the framework, but at least this gives you kind of a, an overview of how the funds flow from the county to the, the end home buyer. Do you have any questions?
Oh, please.
On the down payment, is the homeowner putting in any of their own private money as a down payment?
They, they certainly can.
They could.
Absolutely. Yes.
But they could also go in with zero.
Absolutely.
And then they would...
It's also going to be dependent on the lender.
Then they go through the county program, right? The $20,000 down payment program?
Yep.
But then, depending on who the loan, loan place is, of course, they might be responsible for mortgage insurance, which kicks it up another half percent, and that would be on them if they can't come up with a 20% loan on, or a down payment against the loan, so...
Right. Yeah, each, each of the lenders will, they all, each homeowner will have to work through all of those details with their lender.
Right.
And actually, the loan, the mortgage insurance... And actually, the loan, the mortgage insurance is different based on the type of financing you get. If you've got first-time buyers, you don't have to have 20%.
VA loan type, yeah.
VA loan, first-time buyers, I mean, it's all available to them, making do 10%.
Joe? Let me understand this a little bit, so I...
Joe, just pull up your microphone. You're leaning...
Sorry. Let me understand this a little bit. So I can get a house without a down payment with this program, right? That's what I heard? So how, you know, let's say we put one on the market, we're going to get a few people that are going to bid, right? And so we're going to try to keep it under $300,000, but I can go bid on a home with no down payment. What's the vetting process? Let's say we get 50 or 60 individuals wanting to buy that home, and how are we fair with that distribution and selection of those potential homeowners?
So some of that's going to come down to a step that would be a couple months down the line where we're negotiating with a master builder, and we'd have an agreement in place as to how the sale takes place. There is some language in the next-generation housing framework about not creating bidding wars, and Deb can answer that, but I guess the short answer is we are going to try and address that, but we haven't yet because we're just not at that point.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Any other questions? Steve, I think you had something you wanted to do.
Well, the last piece, again, what Justin showed you was how the finances of next-generation housing saves residents. I'm not going to read this to you. I mean, you can all read it yourself, but it just basically, President Hagy had brought it up today. He said he asked for something a little more clear on how this works for the property owner, the resident themselves, and so I laid this out. Just please keep in mind that all the people down below there are all smiling, so I just want to make sure that it's all marketing. But anyways, again, if you have any questions on how this works, feel free to ask questions.
My question is, how do you know the first picture on the left of those people are smiling? They're facing a wall.
Because they're still holding on to each other.
They're thinking about their mortgage.
Yeah, right.
I have a question for Steve.
Sure.
We got the backing of local financial institutions. Are they involved in this already or not involved in this?
I think Deb and I can answer that. I have met with a few bankers at Forte specifically, and we kind of walked them through the process. And we involved bankers early on in it, trying to figure out how to make this work. There was a lot of problems as to how to make the funds flow in a way that satisfied everybody, and we tried a bunch of different things, and I won't go through all of them, but you had to create, make sure that we weren't creating a loan-to-value ratio issue. The county cannot be in a position where they're directly giving the money to an end-user citizen, and so this is kind of what we came up with, using lawyers, using mortgage brokers, bankers, realtors. And I know that at the county, they've talked to a number of additional banks and financial institutions as well.
So everybody's receptive?
Yes. It's actually, we've been working between the county infrastructure investment and the down payment program. We've engaged Westbury Bank, Glacier Hills Credit Union, Bell Bank, and Landmark Credit Union, and they've all been very helpful and very receptive and to making sure that the both sides of the equation, the infrastructure investment as well as the down payment program, both work seamlessly together, and that definitely took some doing, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Alderman Phillips?
So I got one that's less about the details but more in the reaction to the Trace and Tracy Cross review, right? So in the statement as well as throughout that document, they talk about how we're going to succeed with this project, and clearly, the statements they make in this executive summary and throughout the document is, hey, a different approach must be taken. I'll quote some of these, "Disciplined by all stakeholders and builders." There's another section here that talks about with manageable level of discipline, right? So keep reading. Much greater discipline needs to happen. They talk about four very specific ownership product lines in order to achieve sustainable reduced costs. So just philosophically, how are we going to achieve the level of discipline that Tracy Cross indicated in that document with respect to, hey, I'm going to hook up with a builder who's going to build a cheaper home than anything that we've ever built before, regardless of the $14,000 bonus to whoever and the 0% down? But costs are costs. You're trying to build a 1,700-square-foot home for less than $180 a square. How are we achieving that? And the reason I bring it up is because it's so evident here that says, hey, you need to hook up with the right people.
Right.
Who are those right people, and how are we going to execute that?
Sure. And early on in the process, the county did a builders forum to kind of talk about the program and see what kind of interest there was, and from that, 11 builders wanted to be interviewed because they were interested. They ranged from very small builders who just wanted, you know, maybe five lots a year, to some of the biggest builders in the state who said, I'm interested if I can have the whole subdivision. And we asked them, like, what have you done that's similar? What could you do? How could you cut costs without cutting quality? And they all came prepared. A number of them had come with new plans based on both this Tracy Cross study and some other things that we'd given them, saying, you know, I'd never done this one before, but I kind of like it, or this was a one-off that I did, and if I tweak a few things here and there, I think I can make this work. So, yeah, they, I mean, what Tracy Cross was really alluding to is, we've gotten to the point where you've got more dormers than 2x4s in homes, and that's really expensive. I mean, the trust calculations themselves are probably $20,000. And he's, they were talking about doing box-on-box, you know, four-square homes, kind of like they used to do, that are more simple, but they're actually, in many ways, more efficient, both to build and more efficient to live in. But beyond that, there's kind of the Costco model of make it back on scale. If you've got a large builder that wants this entire project, they can really streamline their processes, which reduces, they don't have the same ramping up costs, and they can just leave all the equipment there, so they reduce some of their fuel costs. They can just have, all right, workers from this group, you're just going to go down the block all week, and you're going to build the same things. They can build it faster that way. So, I mean, there are a number of ways that we can address it, but it will be a challenge.
Yeah, my thoughts on that, Mayor, and the team here is that you're relying on a single contractor now to be able to get those opportunities versus normally, you would have multiple contractors, have a competitive environment to be able to control that cost, but now we're hooking with one individual, and that entire trust is with that organization. Is that my understanding on how we're achieving that?
Are you looking for a general contractor to manage that, or...
No, I think...
You know, one or many.
The way that I think it would work best is one master builder, but we don't have to do it that way. If we get a proposal from a number of builders working together that each take a smaller part, we're open to that, too, and that decision can come further down the line. And if we cannot achieve those kind of efficiencies, and if the builder just says, I can't do this for under $400,000, then we're not meeting the goals of the program, and then that's a stop point.
One of the things, too, that Justin pointed out in his questions and answers, the eight-page document that he referred to earlier was, again, there are several areas within this process moving forward in which he calls the off-ramps. In other words, if we don't get to this, we will not do that. If we don't get to this, we will not do that. And so the step we're taking tonight, and trying to bring us back to what we're talking about tonight, which is the engineering service contract, again, this can move forward, but yet if, after all is said and done and the engineering portion of it to get it set for, taken to a contractor, if we get to the contractors and there's no one that's interested in the parameters, although we already know there are, obviously 11 people showed up for an interview, 11 different groups showed up for an interview, you know, we could, we would not create the TID. We don't create the TID. We don't take the loan, and we jump off the interstate at that point.
Mayor?
I would just add a question. I mean, are we in open questions now? Because I was waiting for all of everybody to finish their presentations.
Oh, okay, then we'll take... Alderman, what?
Are we in open questions then?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So just to be clear about what we're voting on tonight, the county is paying for this set of, like, the funds that we're getting is being paid by the county to do this work. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
And please understand, this is piecemeal, so the 328 is as we go.
I understand. Do we have to pay that money back?
No. I mean, I guess, that's my short answer, but is there a scenario that you're...
So like, let's say we do these plans, and then we get to a point where we're talking with builders, and they're like, we just can't do these houses for this price. Like, do we owe the county the money if that happens?
We do not have a memorandum of agreement in place yet. I would certainly argue that if extraneous factors prevent us from doing this project in such a way as to meet the goals of the county's program, that we should not need to repay them. So again, my shorter answer is, no, I don't believe so.
I would recommend, I would just recommend that we would put a caveat on our yes vote, that it is contingent on making sure that that memorandum of understanding is in place such that the city's not on the hook. My personal opinion, however this body would like to move forward, I'll go with Joe.
We're not making any motions at this point. We're not done talking.
I understand. Come on, I'm just suggesting.
So...
Yeah, well, the only other quick question I have is, you mentioned one number, and that was that we only have 100 housing, single-family housing spots left.
83.
83, okay, well, less than 100. Okay, do we, that does not include, I am assuming, those that have come up to us, talked to us, and then shelved it. So there are more than 83. They're just not in a position where one could just walk up and buy a lot immediately and do it, but we do have, if you will, in reserve, housing that we've talked about before, or different plots of land that would be 100 or more housing each.
Yeah, there are proposals.
Right.
Yeah, those, in talking to the developers, those are, at least at a standstill, if not dead, those projects.
Understood.
But they could come back. But yes, my, the inventory that I'm referring to is platted lots with all the infrastructure to them.
Right, okay. I just wanted to make sure, because I know there have been all the persons that have brought up the fact that those things do exist, and they're not, they didn't vaporize, that they are still there, so we have potential for single-family housing outside of just those 83. It would just be a little bit longer play. So, okay, thank you. Go ahead, Joe.
So just kind of just to touch on Alderman Webb's statement, if you remember correctly, though, in the plan here, only half of the houses are falling underneath the county plans. The other ones where it comes down to our apartments and some of the others are not part of the county, so you guys got to keep that in mind. When they talk about the numbers that they're putting out there, not all those properties there, you know, which, another thing lends me to believe, and I do appreciate, you know, Signacast and Helgason coming out here. That was one of my biggest beefs up until this point, so thank you guys for listening to Tom and Steve and coming out and expressing your vote, your opinions. You know, I've worked, or my sons have worked within your businesses. They're great companies. They're a great anchor to the city, you know, and one thing that I'm thinking of here is, if you look at this plan, and this is why I would say no, do not go forward with this plan at this point, is it, as it states in the Tracy Cross presentation, right, it needs everything. This plan, and I don't know if you guys can show it up on the screen, but this plan has single-family houses, it has duplexes, it has townhouses, it has, you know, it's just, we have a lot going on, and to feed off of what the mayor's saying, we have other, we have other areas, right? We have other areas in town. My opinion, my opinion on this is, this is too much in one area. You talk about discipline, Joe talked about discipline in the Cross. You talk about getting one builder. You got a builder, guys, that's going to be building 300,000 to 400,000 homes, you know, $300,000 homes, apartment complexes, townhouses and stuff like that, you're going to have one builder to build all of those? To Alderman Webb's point, I think that you're going to have a hard time finding someone that's going to be able to build a quality home out of all of that. What are some of the shortcuts? I know there's a lot, you know, you guys, Justin had done buried us with a ton of paperwork to read. I don't know how many of you guys read all of it and who hadn't. He did compare some of the other areas that's building in there. He's comparing us to Feensville, to Mequon, to Brookfield. Those are two areas, we've always said, hey, we're not a Cedarburg, we're Hartford, right? You're also building in areas that have a lot different feeds in there. There's other papers, I have all kinds of stuff here. I got papers and articles of what is being decided and what is being called next-generation housing. I don't know if you guys know about it, but in Campbellport, they're building in next-generation housing on half acres, half a million dollars up in Campbellport. These houses don't look much different than the houses they're building on these things here. So what I'm trying to say is a definition of next-generation housing, don't fall underneath, you know, everybody's doing the same thing, because everybody's doing stuff completely, completely different. Look at what houses they're going for in Mequon, what they're going for in Brookfield, what they're going for out there. Look at the areas that they're feeding. We have, as these two gentlemen said, we have businesses they want to run here. They're not the commercial, they're not the doctors and the lawyers and everybody else that's living out in those other areas. These are, these are people are actually helping and working in this community. And if you look at what is, if you go down, and suppose you can put a 20% down on a 300 to 400,000 home, do you know how much that makes? Do you know how much your payment's going to be? Typically about $3,000 a month. How many of these people can do that without multifamilies, right? So here's a point I'm making. You look at the plan, you look at what's going on, there's too much in this. What we need to do as a city, what we all need to do is look at where does Hartford really need to go? I'm not saying that this isn't a great idea. What I'm saying is, part of this is a great idea. We want affordable homes for people to work in our, within the industries. Dennis, you're going to kill me, but I'm going to say, get rid of the single-family homes in there. Get more duplexes, get more townhouses. Listen to me, wait a second, before you shake your head, I was being nice to you, be nice to me now, and listen. The thing I have, though, and what you guys got to understand, is we have two more properties that is prime for development. Last meeting, we had brought up that we had able, actually it was closer, but we had brought up that we were able to make what we call the industrial park, make that look good, make that attractive for businesses to come in. And, yeah, it costs the city some money. We're up on $10 million on this plan right here, and we're not sure it's going to work, guys. We're not quite sure what it's going to do and how all these houses are going to hold those values by having the multiples. What I'm saying is, I think as a city, we hold back. We don't need the $2 million from the county. I say, don't spend the money, we don't need it, we don't have to do it. Let's figure out what's the best for the city. Let's figure out what's the best, what's going forward, because there's no green space on this property land here, by the way, guys. Every development we put in, we require green space. Now granted, there's green space all around it today, there's no green space even on this plan. What can we do as a city? Let's hold back. Let's not be part of the thousand. You heard, you heard her, and she was very, very kind in saying, that money, when they get their thousand, it's going back into us. Let us be the next wave, if that's the case. If that's something that we feel and we see that's helped, last time when it was proposed to us, Slinger was in, Slinger's out, right? Different reasons, but Slinger's out because they have a developer, they have somebody that's trying to try to make this land work for them. They're not going to build a half a house and let you finish off your basement. They're not going to put in half of this or half of that. What he's doing is he's building a quality house right on the interstate. Jackson's right on 45, they're hook, line, and sinker. If you guys looked at them, those guys are growing like crazy. They're just putting houses up like crazy. This is great. This is one less way they have to do it, and as you mentioned in the past, the county's helping. They don't have the backbone to go through, they don't have the resources to go through and do this stuff, and to figure out what we need to do. We have a very talented team here in Hartford that can take and look at the bigger picture and take it one step further and move forward. I'm not saying that we don't need affordable housing. I am saying we need everything that Tracy Cross study says, but you can't do it on less than 60 acres. So think about it. We don't, we're not in a rush. We're not in a rush to put anything through at this point, and look at what we have to do. And, and look at what we have to do and what, where the rest of the city goes to. I tell you right now, what scares me with this, and if we go through with it, it's not us building it, it's not the next five years us worrying about people selling this and making money on it, it's ten and fifteen years down the road, and what is, what is here? There's, there is nowhere near any support I've heard from, from some of the, some of the staff within the city is not, is not afford, is not for this. I talked to them personally, I have not talked to the, um, to the fire or to the chief, but you're putting in an island out there, guys, that right now not being patrolled, not being taken care of, and we're talking about, we bought property on the other side of town for a firehouse. And we're still building this direction here. Maybe not a bad idea, but you guys, think about what we're doing, you got to look at it, the big picture. And by the time this is all built, and by the time this stuff all settles out, we are not going to be here. I won't be on council, Jeff won't be on council, you know, Dennis won't be on council, but you guys will be there.
Never say that.
Well, he may come back.
Yeah.
But, but my point is, what do we leave in Hartford, and what are we doing? And, and we can't just take a knee-jerk reaction. It sounds great, it looks good, you know, the county's coming in and trying to help these people. I think we can come up with something much more reasonable, much more affordable, and much more diversiful-, diversified for all of our, our needs within the city. That's right, Matt.
Mayor, can I refute one item?
Absolutely, go ahead, please.
All right, uh, I don't, I don't refute. Joe, um, I'm going to refute one comment you made. You had, you said you had a conversation with one of my staff members, but you did not have knowledge if the police and fire behind it. I'd like to ask if any of the other aldermen had a conversation with any of our firefighters, our pla-, our fire chief or our police chief regarding their support of it.
And Kyle, when you talked to the fire chief, I'm sorry, I, I spilled your, your information.
You guys all talk to each other.
What's that?
You guys all talk to each other.
Well, we do talk to each other, there's not, there's never a time in which you talk to one of my staff that don't tell me. So, what did they tell you?
That, at the department head meetings, uh, I talked to the fire chief, and he said that he was okay with everything. Having said that, um, I, I was also of the belief that fire, uh, police was also on board with all this. So, I did not contact him.
Again, just want to refute the point that was made, thank you.
And that's fine, I, I made it very clear that I'd not talked to them.
Okay, Alderman Webb?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I did read everything that was provided, um, and I think this is a, this is a tough one, obviously, like, in the conversations, like, um, but I, I want to be respectful of the comments that have been made by business owners and those from businesses in Hartford. Um, and I think this is a very large invest, investment, it's the size of, or at least on par with like the Dodge Industrial Park. And I also, I, I respect what Alderman Kohler said, but I think if we had a better solution for this property, without the involvement of the county, we would be looking at it. And without the county, the cost is significantly higher, the borrowing is higher. Um, and so, I don't agree that, like, we can somehow pull a magical plan out of our hat and make this better. I think if we have investments that we're going to get from outside parties to try and make this more palatable, then we should do so. And I think the, the small amount of places that people can move to, the very small amount of properties available and houses in this range, um, make it important for us to do something for the community, and so, I will be supporting it.
Alderman Turchik.
I, I too want to give kudos to the county and the city administration on all the hard work to make a complex situation even more complex. So there's some things that, um, I want to just try to, I guess, some points I want to make, right? One thing that I am concerned about is that the city is the developer in this project. I've said that many times to staff, that I would hope that we would not be, but it turns out we're going to be. Second of all, this is an eight to ten million dollar project, right? I really, at this point in time, during a recession, or quote-unquote, maybe not so much of a recession, to put an eight to ten million dollar burden on the taxpayers and the tax base of the city, we have to borrow this money, correct? We don't have ten million dollars laying around.
This would be a TID borrowing, yes.
Yes, it's borrowing, okay? The original intent of the property was for industrial. We've struggled to find businesses to come into the industrial park. Something to be considered, right? One thing that Mr. Webb brought up before was, it seems like the county doesn't have the same risk that the city has. It's a loan, right? County gets their money back, okay? Think of that, as well, okay? There are way too many restrictions, complications for the builder on this and the homeowner. It's government-controlled, not capitalistic by nature, okay? So, and we've already touched on the other two subdivisions. It appears to me that the government's picking winners and losers on what subdivisions get built, what subdivisions don't, how we incentivize the subdivisions. So this one was chosen, okay? So, it just doesn't sit right at this point. I would strongly recommend that we pause on this. To Joe's point, the loan will get paid back to the county, and they're going to build a thousand homes, so we might get a chance to revisit and potentially get a bite at the apple again after we see some success inside the county, or maybe not success. So, I would strongly suggest we pause, I am not for this at this time.
Did you have something, Steve?
No.
I would, could I?
Yeah, yes, please, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to, to comment on the, um, the county was getting the money back, all the money back. In the, the flow chart that I gave you, the initial funding for the infrastructure will be coming back to the county, but that's being reinvested in other next-gen housing developments throughout the county. But in the end, all of these funds are going to be invested in reducing mortgages for the home buyer. And that other side of the equation that I talked about, the down payment program, is reducing the mortgages for the home buyer.
Ah, Alderman Garza.
This is county-driven, uh, initiative, right?
It's not just the county, we have a, a coalition of local governments.
But the seed was here.
All the cities and the villages.
It started in Hartford.
Yep.
It started, it started with, I, I hate to give credit.
Yeah, I know. With Mayor Maholick and Tom Hosted, it's, that's where it started, and it grew, and then the county got on board and decided to utilize their resources.
If any one of you says, "I actually give credit to the mayor," I'll call you a liar.
Well, I just wanted, you know, to, to get the details on how all this started, because, um, I mean, you look at this, it's like the county's saying, all right, Hartford, we want you to do this here because we think you need houses. And you're shaking your head, no, explain yourself.
No, the county, again, going back to the original point. Mayor Maholick, Tom Hosted sat right here in this, in this room, and said, "We need to do some sort of, workforce housing in Hartford." We looked at a sub, uh, the property that's directly to the east of Quad. You now have a mini warehousing, things like that. There's also a lot right in the corner there, we looked at that. We looked at about three other spots, um, throughout the city, and said, "What if we can put up something else?" We looked at the idea of a Wassa Homes idea, you know what a Wassa Homes is, it's easy. So, uh, can we pop, you know, a couple of basements in, and then just pop, you know, a, a ton of Wassa Homes all over the place? We, uh, actually, the mayor went up, I believe, to talk to the Wassa Homes themselves. He started swinging a hammer and people got nervous. But the, the bottom line is, is that he looked at it, we did some due diligence on the, on the idea, and it just wasn't going to work out, it wasn't getting us to the numbers that we wanted. So, then, Mayor Maholick, again, went to the county and talked to them about the concept, and said, "Can you guys get involved?" The, thus, they got involved with the whole process, but again, uh, he and Tom were the first ones to come up with the idea.
So this is about a four-year process, uh, thousands of hours in research and resources. This is not a knee-jerk, uh, response to any of this. But beyond, beyond, uh, the, the county not initially driving it, both Tom and I are on the coalition. Much of what's in that county framework was discussed by us, advocated for by us. So, that, that documents mine as much as it is Deb's.
And Ian's.
And, and Ian's, yeah.
Wayne, did you something?
Well, we've talked about this for several years. We obviously know there's a need for workforce housing. Somebody mentioned earlier, forty-four hundred people work in Hartford, but they don't live here. There's a reason they don't live here. That, number one, they can't afford to live here, and number two, there's no home, that many homes for sale. Number three, the apartments are full. I left town yesterday morning at five-thirty in the morning, heading west, heading up to the cabin. From Hartford to beyond Houstusford was bumper-to-bumper traffic coming this way. Those are probably ninety percent of those people were workers that were coming to Hartford. But they're living out in Houstusford, the Oshel Woodland, Iron Ridge, because there's nothing available for them in Hartford, maybe nothing that they can afford. So, there is a definite need for workforce housing. This is the best thing I've seen to come along in a long time, after four years of work by all of you people out there. It's a tough call, it's a tough call. You guys have made some good points financially, but this is the closest we've come to an affordable housing development in Hartford that I've seen for a long time. Because every other housing development is three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand dollar homes. That's what the builders are building. So if you guys can convince builders to come in and build lower-priced homes with the county down payment program, I think it'll work. If we can convince people to do that. Or convince them to move into apartments, or convince them to, uh, some, some other people. We always talk about workers. What about mom and dad, that the kids are gone? They might want to buy or build a brand-new home out in that subdivision. That frees up their house. So, you know, this might work. And I say might with a little bit of hesitancy, because I know where you guys are coming from, but I think it might work.
Alderman Kohler.
So Wayne, if you look at, when you talk about three hundred, four hundred thousand dollar homes, if you look at the drawing, besides those, the orange colors on the bottom, that whole up on top, those are all your three hundred and four hundred thousand dollar homes. So what you're saying is, what we need to do then is build the townhouses and the duplexes, and get rid of the four hundred and three hundred, four hundred thousand dollar homes. That's what you're basically saying by getting affordable living, because that's what this plan is. That's my point, my point is, you don't have all those affordable homes you guys are thinking you're getting right now. Half, three-quarters of that property that they're looking on, on, on the sixty acres, three-quarter, better than half of that property is going with their three hundred and four hundred thousand dollar homes. So what I'm saying is, the handful of homes is not going to help the, the businesses with their affordability. And then the question comes down to, and Deb, I, I apologize for this, but what, what's going to hold those values of those three hundred, four hundred thousand dollar homes if you have the, the apartments and some of the other type of houses there? That's my point, my point is, you're building too much on, on less than sixty acres, and you're trying to do everything that that Tracy Cross has to say, too, you're trying to do everything at just a little miniscule piece of it, and it's not making the impact that I think you guys all are hoping to get. And it really sickened me during the, 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 um, planning commission, when we had, one of the, one of the gentlemen said, "You know what, we never, no one's ever did it, let's try it and see what happens." Guys, you're, what's going to happen is what we have to live with, what our grandparent, our grandchildren and children are going to have to live with after us. It's not them making these decisions, and, "Let's just try and see what happens." That's my point, let's make this right first. Let's not leave something for them to have to clean up. Let's not leave, let's leave quality homes and put them in quality areas where you can easily get three hundred and four hundred and a half a million dollar homes in areas, if we would develop and take our time and help develop those properties as well.
If this goes through, Justin, what goes first, apartments?
Townhomes.
Townhomes? Or duplexes? Or all the above?
Um, it may be some combination of all of the above, and just while we, while I'd recommend going with a master builder, they would sub out the apartments to a partner, because there is no builder that does all of this stuff, so there would certainly be a couple of builders. But I don't think we're just throwing something at a wall and trying to see if it'll work. We've done it in Gateway Estates, and we've done it in Red Oak. Uh, in Red Oak, we've got single-family, two-family, uh, just to the south is Oriole Ponds, a hundred and fifty-six apartments. You've got four-family condos just to the north and duplexes. Gateway Estates, you've got seventy-two apartments, uh, that's our, those are our second and third-most expensive single-family homes in the city, and they are all surrounded by mixed uses, and they, their values are exploding. So I'm not worried about that.
Roosevelt Higgy.
Well, I'll start off with, I've got a fair number of comments to make. I have always supported single-family homes, and, uh, this project at least has a single-family component to it. We're, we're told, well, people don't want single-family homes. No, that's not true, there aren't any for them to have. As soon as one's on the market, it's sold almost overnight. So at any rate, what has happened in the past? Well, the last five housing projects in Hartford have all been multifamily. We've got the apartments over behind Walmart, there's Oriole Ponds, there's South Wilson and Lou Street, uh, there's the latest addition, uh, South Wilson where it's extended, there's the Rincon Building, those are all multifamily facilities. Some might be owner-occupied, whatever, but they're still all multifamily, and that's what got built. We did not build single-family homes, so right now, we are reaching the point of running out of that. So, at any rate, um, this will maximize land use, I'm not against that. Smaller lots, you get more single-family homes in there. Owner-occupied is a good thing. Some of the benefits to all this, again, maximizing land use, roadways will be completed. Talk about worrying about fire department, police department, getting all these roadways in. It's not just the internal roadways that are for the subdivision, it's the connecting roadways so that you can get around the outside of the subdivision, and, uh, fire department, police department, uh, rescue squad, et cetera, they can get into the subdivision. It will improve the flow of traffic on the north side of Hartford, and, uh, those are good things. As far as developing a TID, from what I read, there would be, um, let me see here, increment guarantees. We're not just going to build it and the city take the, uh, the risk. This would have guaran-, would have guarantees built into it, so we don't have that. We've done that with other, uh, TIDs around the city. We took very little risk, because increment was built in, the taxes had to be paid, and the city didn't pay them, the builders did. We've tried to get industrial development on this property, and have difficulty doing it, because you need a very large, one-item industrial development in order to pay for all this infrastructure. And if somebody else doesn't come in, a second, uh, developer or a second, uh, business, then you're sitting there, it won't move forward, that's, uh, that's the risk. With housing, you're going to build a few houses at a time or a bunch of houses at a time, and it'll always keep building, uh, to help pay back on all of this. Then there's the discussion of green space. Yes, there is green space, the south edge of this is all green space, and that's proposed to be passive-use park. I don't see that as an issue. In order to, uh, the building and instruct, the infrastructure, other subdivisions have large costs. Though, there are a couple, single-family subdivisions that were proposed, they have very large costs. You can't just say, "Well, if we don't do this..." You can't just say, well, if we don't do this, put the money toward these other subdivisions, because they don't have sewer and water. It might not be tax money, but to extend the water in the sewer, we're looking at millions of dollars against our utilities. And so they aren't just, oh, go ahead and build them. No, there's problems with them, and that's why they haven't gone forward. We sat there looking at it, just to extend the sewer, could easily be in the millions. And who's going to pay that? Well, the ratepayers are going to pay it. Okay. It won't be the taxpayers necessarily, but it's still coming out of somebody's pocket, and that is the citizens. So that's pretty much my comments for now. I'm sure by the time this is all done, there'll be more.
With the comments that have been made, oh, okay, go ahead, Alderperson Phillip.
Just wanted to thank Signacast as well as Helgeson. I think I have good memories of Helgeson in my days of non-Grey. Let's just put it that way, back in Carl Duvanix days. So, thank you for those comments. I, I want some clarity on the timing. Looking at the latest information you sent out, 2024 is when this project would end with respect to the infrastructure. Then construction would start on those properties? Or would that be in parallel? We're talking about immediate needs for housing, you know, of the comments that I heard, but we're not looking to sell a home until 2026? Is that a good number, or where am I at with the exact timing of this?
No, I.
Was it 2025?
No, I, I think, I, I think if things move forward, the intention, originally, we were going to try and see if we could get some foundations going this year. After talking to the engineers, they said, I think you'll get better prices if you break up the bidding, or maybe bid it over the late fall for an early spring project. So right now, we're looking at maximizing efficiencies rather than time. But I still think that you will see, if this moves forward, if we can reach an agreement with a builder and, and get those guarantees and all of that, then you'd still, you'd be looking at homes going up late next year. But yeah, I mean, that is the unfortunate part of any of this. Like, there's no immediate solution.
Late next year puts me into end of 2024. I'm building for nine months, which puts me at the end of 2025.
I think we'd, we'd see people moving in in 2025, for sure.
And then, let me be clear, based on the density that everybody was talking about. So we're looking at putting a three-hundred-thousand-dollar home on a sub point-one-five-acre lot, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. With the comments that have been made and some of the points that are brought up, I just wanted to let you know what I have tried to talk to people about, obviously, over the last few months, that I would, it's, it's very rare that I can go into the Walmart, the Pig, Festival, Aldi, and not get stopped and talk about a myriad of things. It's one of the things you get when you're a, a smaller city mayor, is there's a, a level of, of gee, I know you, and, and I've got some questions for you. The, the one thing that has surprised me is that this hasn't been a big topic, even though I've seen it's gotten a lot of press, you know, you see it in the newspaper, you see it online. But people aren't really looking to discuss it, and I think part of it is because there's been a lot of questions, thankfully, I think, that have been answered here, as to what we're looking at and what we're trying to do. However, if I pose questions, it's interesting as to the answers that I get. And the, the one that stands out the most, when I'm talking with people, any, you know, my age, okay, mid-sixties, or in their seventies, and, and I ask them, they live in Hartford, they've lived in Hartford a long time, you know, would they consider buying another house here? And they almost invariably say no. And I say, why? I say, because I'd want a townhome. I cannot believe the pent-up-ness, if you will, if that's a decent word, of the amount of housing that exists in the city of Hartford that I think would be freed if we were concentrating more on townhomes. And again, I have anecdotal evidence. My daughter and her husband purchased a home for well under two-hundred-thousand dollars when it was vacated, because, again, what's happening is, is some of these older people are moving out, okay? My in-laws, who ended up moving to Germantown, did not move to Hartford, even though they came from northwest Minnesota. They wanted to be in the area, they at least wanted to be in Washington County, but they couldn't buy a townhome here because there weren't any available that they were interested in. And they ended up buying again in Germantown. So they stayed in the county, but they didn't come to Hartford. And so I'm, so only because it's touched my life on both ends of this, and then in speaking to people that have homes that would consider moving and have an interest in staying within our community. We have a lot to offer, seniors here with what we do. I mean, even the way that we spent money on the Veterans Aquatic Center. Look at how it's set up with a zero depth, so God forbid, even if one of them's in a wheelchair, you can enjoy the pool. You can go, and, and you've got the lazy river, and we have senior walking and that. So we, we have set everything up that we do to have a work-live-play type of environment for all ages. And so we would have, we would be able to capture, I think, more people if we could look at the possibility, and this is kind of, it's a long, drawn-out explanation that's leading to a question. And that is, if we took the single-family housing out and turned it into duplexes and townhomes, so we would actually have more units, and what we would do is fulfill a need, and you, in this scenario number two, that, that was kindly provided by our city administrator, you know, they purchase a, a place, and then their place opens up, so now we have housing stock available. There's a lot of nice ranches in the city of Hartford that would sell for approximately what we're looking at right now as our price point for the houses that would be new. I mean, yeah, maybe they have a little older kitchen, and, and, you know, which you can update over time, or you, you'd have something that you'd want to do with the bathrooms, because they're, you know, nineteen-seventies yellow, okay? You know what? The toilet still flushes, and the sink still goes, and you could move into the house and do it piecemeal, or have it done. You could do it yourself, if you're a DIY-type of person. You'd be able to do that as a younger family moving in, but it would be opened up, because the person would be moving to a townhome and being able to stay in their same church, by their same, you know, by their children, by the community that they've built up over time, and, and, and look at doing something akin to what Alderperson Coler's talking about, and that's not trying to do everything on sixty acres, and see if we can do more about opening up houses that already exist here by getting the people to move out to a quality new townhome, where their grass is cut, where their snow is shoveled, where they're paying a flat fee over time. So in twenty years, if they happen to still be there, like my mother is, at, at, approaching on eighty-nine, you know, she's paying her, her fee that they pay for a condo, so when she had her roof replaced, she didn't get a sest out of her pants. So understand that, again, anecdotally, I'm touching on all of these things. She, of course, she lives way up in Woodrop, but she does have a real nice condo, and she gets the tax breaks and all that, but she doesn't have to do any of that stuff that you do as your homeowner. So I, I really believe that there is a solution here. But what I, now my question, can we do this engineering that would look at it two different ways? One, with the single-family homes. Two, removing the single-family homes and supplanting that with townhomes and duplexes. I would suggest, then, that the duplexes have a caveat in them, because, talk about affordability. I mean, I remember, my parents did this, is they had a duplex where they lived in one half and rented out the other. Okay, it, it reflects back to the old Polish flat that you used to see, and, and they still exist in Milwaukee, where you might have the owner living on top, but you get the Polish flat underneath. Can we do something along that line and then put a contingent that the owner has to live in the building? So one of the halves is there, and then the other half could actually be rented, which would supplant a good part of the rent, and now you have what you need. A person could have an experience of not living in an apartment. Then they'd have their own garage, but they could rent it, and the owner, who makes sure that it doesn't go to hell in a handbasket, is living right next to them. So I think we have, you know, something we could do there.
I think, I mean, we've got a, a general land use pattern and a street pattern that I think are relatively set. The way we discussed it with the engineering firm is to get them to like a thirty percent point, and that's when we want to engage a builder. And if a builder comes back and says, you've got too many two-family, too many single-family, I'd like to tweak this, we can do that. The, it's a flexible layout that would allow for different land use types. Yeah, and, and certainly, I'd be open to that. As to your second question about side-by-sides, where you own a half, I'd have to discuss that with Deb. I mean, that, that particular unit may not qualify as part of this program.
Well, the interesting thing about a new program is you can change the rules. Funny thing about that, when you're doing something for the first time, you make your rules, and then you set something up that actually can make it extremely attractive. I know a lot of people who always say, yeah, I'd like to get into rental. Well, hey, if, if I buy a, or, excuse me, a side-by-side, or even an up-and-down, and I'm going to rent the other part so I can augment the payment of that, whose rule is it? And what do you have to do to get around it? As long as they stay for the requisite five years. So you have the same thing, you're just adding a component on it to make it that much more affordable. I, I really think it's a winning thing. Go ahead, Joe. In fact, I actually have a question to you. Would, is that be something you'd support?
Well, that's exactly the kind of direction we're looking at. And I'll tell you right now, you're looking at something to do with more of that. You're going to get more homes out there. Whether it falls underneath, if the county could twist their rules and make it fall underneath there, you know, God, you know, we thank you so much, and God bless you. But, you know, if you can't, that's what I'm saying, guys. We don't want to spend something just because we have it. If it's something that we could, if we could, we can make it affordable. I mean, I'm, I'm going to throw this right in the county. This came out of the county's brochure. I thought it was pretty funny, because it took, this is, I'm extremely excited to be a Washington County in moving forward with the Next Generation Housing Initiative. I believe it will help many achieve homeownership in, while living within their means. Okay, guys? Just, we want just a small, new home with a small yard and our own, for our own. We will, we'll finally have a place, our own space. Everyone deserves a chance to feel proud about owning their own home and so on and so forth. Signed, City Hartford resident. Now, this came right out of the county. This is out of the county brochure that she passed away, passed around last week. I know it's out, and it's all over the county. This is what I'm saying. You're talking about some townhouses, you're talking about stuff. People are living up there at Hart, up at, up at Hartford Square. People are living in some of these other areas, even though it's an association, even though they have some doing their mowing and stuff like that, they still have their yard, they still have what they can call themselves. And you listen to the, to the people. So it's not that we're trying to build only for, for, for the businesses, because nothing's going to guarantee that we're building these houses and those four-hundred-and-forty-four, the four-thousand-four-hundred people are going to be moving into these houses. There's no guarantee we can get that they're going to move in that works in the city, right? But to the extent that we have is, who else is using it? Who else can we do it? And how do we make it? You know, we are, we are looking at an older generation. I'm, I'm an empty astronaut after raising four kids in this, in this great city. I haven't moved away. I have a, I have a house that's paid off, and I'm like, I don't need all this, I don't need the yard, I don't need all that stuff. You're right, there might be opportunities to open up other properties within, having something in there. But yet still have an affordable house for some of the newer and some of the employees at these facilities, you know, at these facilities within, within the thing. So, you know, again, I'm not saying we should move forward just to move forward, because we got this, the county. I think we need to do is, we need to make sure that we have a plan, or at least maybe two plans in place, and say, now, let's go to engineering. Now, let's see what we can get, and go forward from there, if we can't do it today.
Is that something that would be attractive to you, if we could take that single-family housing and turn it into duplexes and, and townhomes? So maintain an ownership component, but just not have it as the single-family homes, where I think you, you express more concern about holding value.
What I'm looking at is, what, what makes the most sense on sixty acres for everybody? What are we trying to do?
Is that a yes or a no?
I'm, I'm leaving it, I'm leaving it open. I'm not going, I'm not going to say one way or the other. I'm saying what makes the most sense. In my opinion, it would make more sense making it more, more affordable housing, because a duplex, a, a, you know, townhouses, and, you know, and even Pepper and the, the, even if you have a couple apartment units, whatever it is, I think that's more affordable, is what we guys are looking for. If that's, if that's the point of this next-generation housing, be affordable for Hartford, I think that's a direction that would be more favorable. And we look at, what can we do? We have plenty of other property. We need to work as a county, as a city, to help develop that, those properties too, and we can get a much, much bigger and better mix.
Okay, Jeff, go ahead.
So the last fifteen, twenty minutes that I had just listened to, my statement on making a complex issue even more complex, just proved my point. We don't know what we want. Do we?
I know what I want.
No, I, I, yeah, I know, it's very clear on your agenda, Mayor. That, I get that, right? That's very clear.
Four years clear.
Very four years clear of that. Yeah, that was very pointed out and very poignant. But I'm not too sure what we want. So I suggested that we paused and waited. So I'm still in that mode. Thank you.
Okay, Alderperson, Zakara.
Was there, in the last four years, actually, like, some sort of study to where what was actually needed? Is this a smattering of what you guys came across as, this is enough apartments, this is enough homes? Is, is the demand there for more townhomes and more apartments to just make this denser?
There is demand. We don't anticipate that this, this won't satisfy the demand for any of these on its own. The idea is that this is the first project, and you show the developers that you can do it, and then hopefully, the other developers start taking a look at other projects and see that this is a way to achieve some efficiencies and drive down some costs.
But did you guys actually do a study?
Well, Tracy Cross's study showed demand far beyond the four-hundred-and-eighty units they proposed. But this is the mix that they felt, based on their research, and this is all that they do, that, that there was demand. But do I have an exact number for single-family? No. Do I have an exact, for any of, so no, I don't have an exact number, but other than to say that they said there was demand beyond what this would create even at four-eighty.
So the answer to your question is yes.
Yeah.
The study. Go ahead, President Hagie.
Businesses need a stable workforce. And when you have all apartments, the workforce isn't stable. I worked at Bronn, people come in, they'd work a day, or two, or three, or maybe a month, or two, or three, and then move on. They lived in apartments, well, okay, they don't have a stake in the community, and off they go. If you want people to be stable, you need single-family homes that they actually own. Then they will stick around, they'll get into a career, as I did, and they'll stay there. They aren't going to be just jumping all over, because, well, this week, we're working at Signacast, next week, we're working over in Jackson at something else. They will not be doing that, because you can't just pack up your home and move like that. And that's what you have with apartments. People are moving constantly, it's a constant influx of people, in and out. With single-family homes, you buy it, you have established roots, and you're more likely to stay put. And I definitely support that this has at least a single-family component. As I said, the last five projects that came through, they were all multifamily. There were no single-family components. That's hundreds of units. We need some single-family construction going on in Hartford.
I would agree with that. I'm just going to shoot real quick on, on that. I, I think that generationally, there is a difference as regards to people wanting to own versus at least getting their foot in the water and, and, as far as housing and renting. So your twenty-somethings, I can't, or even into thirty-somethings, until you get a nesting-type thing, you get married, you're thinking about having kids, I cannot necessarily agree with, with the statement that was just made. However, the, what I'm talking about is taking the single-family homes and adjusting them to things that would attract other types of people, people who, who may want not to have kids. They don't want to cut grass, they don't want to shovel snow, but they're in their late twenties, early thirties. Those people exist, and, and they're going to keep, you know, being, you know, they're going to come. If the job is something that they like, and it's, and their, their remuneration is such that they're, you know, fairly paid, I think that's going to have a lot more to do with it. So that would be, if we can get the employers some housing, now, now we've got to put something on the employers to make sure that they're doing everything necessary to, to hold on to employees, whether they're renting, whether they're owning a side-by-side, or a townhome, or a single-family home. And in that respect, I think you have ownership opportunities. I'm not saying build more apartments where the single-family housing is, is proposed. I'm saying building townhomes and buildings duplexes. That's what I'm looking for. And I think it, because you have a home ownership stake. And, you know, getting to what President Hagie mentioned, I don't necessarily think it has to be single-family. Do I want more single-family? Yes. I think there was a, when Alderperson Church, he mentioned about a capitalist. You're going to see those single-family things pop up in the lots that we're talking about. Not only the eighty-three, but the additional housing. only the 83, but the additional housing areas that have not been fully plotted and everything put in yet. It's going to happen. What we need to have happen is the market has to move to a degree that the people who are sitting on those lots, who own that land, are finally going to see the return that they want, and that is through what the city purports to need as far as being able to develop those, and the, the simple want of the developer, that their, the homeowner, excuse me, the landowner, who would then finally say, "You know what? It's time to do what we need to have to do this, because it's, you know, I'm going to age out of actually benefiting from this." So, it will happen, but, but this is where I think the market's going to take over. We'll definitely get more single-family homes, it's just not going to happen right now based on what's happening in the marketplace with the builders that we have, at least. So, go ahead, Alderperson Webb.
Yeah, I mean, I, my, my last and final comment is...
I'm writing it down.
Go ahead. That, I'm sure everybody on this council has, like, anecdotes about who wants to buy what kind of houses, and, you know, like, what age group, but this is the reason why we hire somebody like Tracy Cross to do a study and help us determine what the density should be and what the housing is supposed to be there, and this is based on their recommendations. So, I feel like that's probably more trustworthy than all the anecdotes, anecdotes we could tell about this. So, I think, like, we either rely on the study, or we rely on anecdotes, and I'm fine relying on the study.
You got to talk to more people at Aldi. Okay. Anybody else?
Let me just ask.
Go ahead.
Justin, when you met with the builders, the focus was pretty much on single-family homes, wasn't it? I mean, did anybody get excited about building apartments out there? Did anybody get excited about building townhouses, owner-occupied townhouses? Or was it all focused on homes?
The majority of the builders were primarily single-family home builders, but not exclusively. And there are a few of the builders, especially larger ones, that do everything but apartments, essentially, and so they've, they've done townhomes, they've done triplexes, duplexes, and they, they were interested in all of it. So, it depended on the builder, but I guess the answer is yes. Thank you.
Just as, Tony, just to say, interestingly enough, Tom, you remember, now, this was, we're going on our seventh year that we started this, that long ago, believe it or not. I'm talking to Tom Hosted from HADC. When we started this, my fantasy dollar amount was $165,000, and when I looked at it, it was, I realized that $185,000 was going to be the least, and then it quickly shot up to 220, even over the months that we were going. It was already growing. Realized that the average home price has gone up since this whole thing started, about 40%. And so, if you take that, you know, the $200,000, and you add, you know, 40% of it, you realize that's $80,000, suddenly, you're $280,000. So, that is a realistic thing, just in that seven years that we started, the home prices, and this was, again, even looking at doing what would be called a manufactured home, something like a Wausau home, is, that, that has been part of the problem of moving this forward as just a single-family home project, because it became untenable. That, and the fact that, who thought, and I'll be honest, who honestly thought that Rincon would fill up as quickly as it did and have a waiting list? That would be not me, okay? So, I really thought that, right, given the price that they were talking about, especially with Rincon, you can't say they're overpriced, because they, they're completely full. So, every time they're building a nice apartment complex, we're full, and that, I think, actually lends to that. Tony, please, go ahead.
Yeah, well, you know, I just, you know, just trying to get to the meats here. Mayor brought this out, a little help from our administration here. Now, he's telling us his main focus was townhomes, apartments, and we're focusing here on single-family and mixed. I think you guys missed the point, what he was trying to get at, so I can't see this going forward right now until we get both of you guys or what the mayor is looking for.
I'm sorry, I missed your point. He said, he just said that he was, he said he was single-family Wausau homes. Then he just talked about the fact he wanted...
Then he talked about getting apartments, townhomes would be more what he's in line with than single-family.
No, right.
It's very confusing. We don't really know what the mayor wants here, so...
I'll tell you right now, townhomes, duplexes, and apartments on 60 acres.
Better, better view on this than just going with the study says. I mean, we're all sitting here looking at different things. We need to figure out what we need. I'd rather see something else go up, you know, maybe work with something we already have existing, some, some land that's kind of anchored right now. There's some parking lots out there that we could redevelop. I mean, there was a plan to do something over by Festival Foods. There's a lot across the street from, you know, north of Sumner that's kind of sitting there. I mean, I'd rather see apartments or something go in, something, than trying to throw something in the middle of Industrial Park at this moment.
We've had experts tell us what we need, which is this. This cannot be developed for industrial use. The infrastructure cost is going to be the same, you're going to overlook at the same $10 million cost, and the valuation is going to be half. So, I can't make those numbers fly on a tid. I'm going to have a distressed tid right out of the gate. I'm not going to recommend that to you. So, you know, I think the mayor's point was, is there any flexibility in this? And yes, there is some flexibility in this, and that's what...
I didn't hear him say flexibility. I thought it was flexibility.
That's what the builders need to tell us. That's what the builders need to tell us, because you need to let them do their part, and this is the proper order of doing things. We can't say, "Here's a 100% plan, it cannot change, this is exactly what we want," and then go to a builder. And that's just not how it works. We're doing things in the right order. You're at this decision point, and I respectfully, I mean, I'd like someone to make a motion.
Okay, Dennis, go ahead, please.
You made a point earlier about having a contingency bill, and what was that?
Oh, the contingency was that of the, what is it, $320,000, I think? Is that, is that what, is that what was settled, that if we're going to be spending this money, that there would be a contingency, that this, there is no clawback from the county on getting this money based on if this doesn't fit the plan going forward, and that would be decided...
It's the exit ramp.
Right, the exit ramp would be decided by the city.
Yes.
All right. So, you know, this is what I would ask the county, because then what it does is it gives us a breathing room, it allows us to do this, and I would really like to see it with and without single-family housing. All of the thing, you know, the plan, I'm just letting you know, and I think that that would be the thing that would be the most adjustable here, and that is to have everything that is turned from single-family housing would be owner-occupied, with the possible exception of duplexes, where the owner would have to be in half. I think that's a very clever way of getting people to buy into it.
So, as we, I don't mean to cut you off, but I mean to cut you off. The question is, is that, I mean, we have killed this, and we have eaten half of it, and the rest of it is still in the garbage. So, if we could just understand that if you approve the plan moving forward to the engineering firm, with the recommendation by the mayor to look at two options, going duplexes, triplexes, townhomes, and apartments versus adding that in there, are you ready to approve this tonight? So, please, we ask, a second time, take a vote.
I'll make a motion to approve with the MOU and the second study.
And contingent on the county agreeing.
That's the MOU.
I understand.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now, the three words that the city administrator does not want to hear, any further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no.
Nay.
Okay, I would say the ayes have it. Is there anybody besides me, then, who would be interested in a, or to have a roll call vote? If not, I'll just let it stand as you would like it. Roll call vote, please, Lori.
Aye.
Nay.
Sikora.
Aye.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Aye.
Rosnyak.
Aye.
Churchy.
Nay.
Garza.
No.
Carol.
Aye.
Phillip.
Nay.
Hagy.
Aye.
Five to four.
Thank you for everybody showing up, so I don't have to make the deciding vote. Thank you, thank you. Okay, with that, for adjournments, Phillip and Carol.
Motion by Alderperson. Phillip seconded by Alderperson. Carol for adjournment at 8:39.
For adjournment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those no, we stand adjourned.